Item 9C, "Receive Report and Provide Direction to Staff Regarding Traffic Safety and Operational Improvements at the Intersection of San Bruno Avenue and Cherry Avenue."
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. We're here tonight to present the analysis and recommendations for the recently completed study performed by DKS Associates regarding the traffic safety and operation improvements at the intersection of Cherry Avenue and San Bruno Avenue. So just a little brief background on the intersection before we start our presentation with the recommendations and the analysis. This intersection, the slide shows the location of the intersection indicated in this blue circle, which is located about a quarter miles away from the near on-off ramps of Interstate 280. The intersection is also signalized, meaning it currently has traffic signals. And here's an aerial of the intersection as well. San Bruno Avenue has two through lanes, and a left lane in both directions. And Cherry Avenue in the northbound direction has a left turn lane and then a shared through and right turn lane. And whereas in southbound direction, this way here, it has a shared left through lane and a right turn lane. So in order to perform their evaluation, DKS researched collision data in the statewide integrated traffic record system, otherwise known as SWITERS, for a time period between August 2012 to August of 2017. A total of 14 collisions were recorded in the SWITERS for that time period. And the crashes included five rear ends, five broadsides, two collisions with fixed objects, one vehicle striking a pedestrian, and one unspecified collision type. So one of the incidents was the hit-and-run on December 19, 2016, where a pedestrian was killed while she was walking across the San Bruno Avenue in a marked crosswalk. Although a thorough police investigation confirmed that there were no visual obstructions or other features that caused or contributed to the accident, the city nevertheless retained DKS Associates to conduct a review of the intersection and identify options that could potentially make the intersection safer for pedestrians and vehicles. So the overall goal of the study is to improve the safety at the intersections. So as part of the evaluation, DKS conducted site visits to observe traffic at the intersection for about 10 hours, reviewed the intersection geometry, and analyzed the intersection operations using traffic engineering software. The results of their analysis is documented in a technical memorandum that contained various recommendations. And during their site visit, they observed several issues. So one of them was the aggressive driver behavior, mainly poor yielding behavior related to drivers making left turns from both directions of Cherry Avenue onto San Bruno Avenue. So as you can see in the slide here, both cars are trying to make a left turn, and then they are improperly yielding, you know, through the intersection there. The other is the drivers traveling northbound on Cherry, which is the blue car, turning left to westbound San Bruno Avenue, and they act uncertain to uncommon traffic, which is, you know, the red car coming, because they are unable to determine if the drivers are traveling these, you know, the southbound on Cherry are going to make a left turn or continue straight into the intersection. And the last is the pedestrian waiting on the northwest, southwest, and southeast corners can be difficult for drivers to see. So after completing their evaluations, DKS determined four recommendations for improvements at the intersection, and Michael will now provide the details on each of those recommendations.
The pointing is not working. So before I get into a discussion of the recommendations, I want to quickly provide an overview of the definition of a permissive left turn, because we're going to be using that term a lot throughout the rest of the presentation. So a permissive left turn is when the left turn movement is allowed to proceed at the same time as traffic in the opposite direction. The driver making the left turn is shown a green circular signal and is required to wait for a gap in the traffic before they can make a turn. They're required to yield to all other traffic that is going in the other direction. So in this figure, you'll see on the screen, the blue car is making the permissive left turn. It's required to yield to both the red car that's traveling straight in the opposite direction and to the yellow car that's making the right turn, and to pedestrians that are using that crosswalk on the west side of the intersection. Permissive left turn control is what is currently used for both directions of Cherry Avenue. So DKS Associates considered a number of different improvements for the intersection. Based on their analysis, DKS is recommending four improvements for consideration by the city. The first recommended improvement is to modify the median on Cherry Avenue on the north side of the intersection to create a new southbound left turn only lane. On the slide, you can see the area that's highlighted by the orange circle. That's the area where the median is to be modified. So there's currently only two southbound lanes that left turn lane there is new. Modifying the median will improve the capacity for southbound direction, which will help minimize congestion at the intersection regardless of any other changes that may be implemented. And modifying the median will also reduce the uncertainty that the northbound drivers are experiencing, because the southbound left turns and the straight-through movements will be separated into different lanes. So that's the yellow and the red cars are now in different lanes. This is illustrated on the slide. All right. Next slide. The second recommended improvement is to add a leading pedestrian interval for the two crosswalks across San Bruno Avenue. With a standard pedestrian signal operation, the pedestrian receives a walk signal at the same time as the adjacent vehicles, which may be making a right turn. And you can see on the slide, on the panel on the left, they're both got the red light, and then when you get to the panel on the right, there are cars receiving the green light and the pedestrian receives a walk signal at exactly the same time. So with the leading pedestrian interval, the pedestrian receives the walk signal about three to seven seconds before the adjacent vehicle receives their green light. The idea is to give the pedestrian a chance to move into a position in the crosswalk where they are more visible to drivers before the drivers are allowed to start moving. Other benefits include reducing conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, increased likelihood of motorists yielding to pedestrians, and enhanced safety for pedestrians who may be slower to start crossing the intersection. On the left side, you can see again, the car and the pedestrian stopped with the red signals. The middle panel shows the pedestrian getting their walk signal in advance of the car. And finally, the third panel shows the car getting their green ball, and they can see the pedestrian, because they've moved out into the crosswalk. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation Statistics from the Federal Highways Administration, leading pedestrian intervals have been shown to reduce pedestrian-involved crashes by as much as 60% at an intersection. This slide shows the two crosswalks across San Bruno Avenue where we're recommending the leading pedestrian intervals, so the red and the blue cars would be delayed before those pedestrians entering the crosswalk. There's no significant negative impact on the operation of an intersection when you do this. Okay, so the next one. Oh, okay. So the third recommendation from DKS Associates is to implement flashing yellow arrows for the left turn movements from both directions of Cherry Avenue. Flashing yellow arrow control is a form of permissive left turn control. The drivers making a left turn are still required to yield to conflicting traffic and pedestrians. The difference is that instead of seeing a green circle, the drivers are shown a flashing yellow arrow. So this slide shows the difference. You can see on the left with the permissive, they've got the green circular controls. On the right, the flashing yellow arrow. Are we going to go to the next slide? We want to emphasize that the traffic signals are different, but the operation is the same. And the reason we would want to do it is because studies show that yielding behavior for drivers making permissive left turns improves if flashing yellow arrows are used, and that leads to an increase in safety. There are typically no other impacts to the signal operations when you do this. There are, however, some significant changes to the actual traffic signal equipment that are required to do a flashing yellow arrow operation. Typically, new poles and new signal heads are required. Several cities in California are already using flashing yellow arrows. That includes Roseville, San Luis Obispo, Pleasanton, and Petaluma. This slide shows the current operation with the blue car, permissive operation with the green circular signal, has to yield to the oncoming traffic. And the next slide shows that they've got the exact same thing, but they're going to get a flashing yellow arrow. So the fourth recommendation from DKS Associates is to implement a right turn overlap for the southbound right turn movement from Cherry Avenue. A right turn overlap means that the signals are modified to show a green right arrow to drivers making a southbound right turn on Cherry Avenue. They're going to do that at the same time that eastbound drivers are making a left turn from San Bruno onto Cherry. This changes the southbound right turn from a right turn on red operation to a situation where they can make the turn freely. On the slide, the yellow car is allowed to make that right turn at the same time as the red car is making their left turn. This is mostly an operational improvement. It will reduce congestion at the intersection primarily during the PM peak, when the southbound right turn is at its heaviest. So another major item that was evaluated as part of the study by DKS and was discussed during our meeting with the TSBC, but was not recommended for implementation, is a protected left turn. Protected left turn control is when the left turn movement is allowed to proceed freely with no conflicting traffic. The driver making a protected left turn is shown a green arrow to differentiate that from a permissive left turn. The next slide, this slide shows the protected left turn operation for the northbound direction. The vehicles traveling in the opposite direction, the red car and the yellow car have a red light, while the blue cars would be shown a green arrow and allowed to turn freely. This option was some discussion. There was some interest in doing this from the public who spoke at the TSBC. The typical advantages of protected left turn movements are safety improvements that result from separating left turn movement from conflicting vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and increased efficiency for the left turn movement. The typical disadvantages of protected left turn movements are decreased efficiency for the other traffic movements, which could lead to an overall increase in congestion at the intersection as a whole, possible decreases in safety at the intersection and in the surrounding area that could result from that increased congestion. And studies have shown that aggressive driving increases with the wait time as drivers become more frustrated and may potentially run through the intersection, which is part of that possible reduction in safety that could result. So it is possible to implement protected left turns either with or without the previously mentioned modification to the median on the north side of the intersection. DKS Associates evaluated both of those possibilities. This slide shows the protected left turns without modifying the median. And the table in the lower left shows some of the results of the delay study, which is telling us that the overall delay at the intersection would increase from 28.2 seconds to 36.4 seconds during the morning, and 24.1 seconds to 53.8 seconds in the afternoon. That's a pretty significant increase in congestion at the intersection as a whole. So this slide shows if we were to do the left turn, protected left turns with the median modification. And the table in the left is the similar results for the delay analysis, and it's 28.2 seconds to 33.8 seconds in the morning, 24.1 to 29.9 in the afternoon. So it's pretty obvious that the impact to congestion is a lot less if we do this in conjunction with modifying the median. DKS Associates and staff also considered the guidance from the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices on the subject of protected left turns. The MUTCD states that protected left turns should be your last option. You try to do other things before you go to a protected left turn. DKS Associates and staff also consider the ease with which the city can change from flashing yellow arrow operation to protected left turn operation. Implementing the flashing yellow arrows requires almost exactly the same type of modification to the intersection as would be needed to do a protected left turn. So by implementing flashing yellow arrows, first, the city is not committing itself to a path that will make it difficult or costly to change to protected left arrows at a later date if that becomes necessary. So to recap, DKS Associates recommends modifying the median on Cherry Avenue on the north side of the intersection to create a new southbound left turn lane. In addition to the modification of the median, DKS Associates recommends implementing flashing yellow arrows, control for the left turn movements from both directions of Cherry Avenue. DKS Associates also recommends implementing a leading pedestrian interval for the two crosswalks that cross San Bruno Avenue. And DKS Associates recommends implementing a right turn overlap for the southbound direction on Cherry Avenue. And in this slide, you can see that same table on the bottom left, this is the results of the analysis for if we were to do all of those things that DKS Associates recommended. And you will see that the end result is that while we can also get the safety improvements that we would gain from modifying the median and the leading pedestrian interval and the flashing yellow arrows, but we will also see a reduction in congestion at the intersection. Staff concurs with these recommendations made by DKS Associates. And I'll let Jimmy wrap it up.
Thanks. So back last...
I'm sorry, Jimmy. I apologize.
Sure.
Keep going.
Okay, thanks. So back last month, staff presented the results of the intersection study to the TSBC Committee for Consideration and Recommendations. And all the recommendations provided to you today were accepted by the TSBC. And the TSBC further recommended that the improvement process be expedited for completion and not to allow concerns about other activities in the area delay the work at the intersection. So in addition, the TSBC requested that staff evaluate angling the crosswalks across San Bruno Avenue in order to improve the ability of drivers to see the pedestrians waiting on the south side of the intersection. Staff will evaluate expediting both the implementation of the leading pedestrian interval and angling crosswalks recommendations to determine whether there are any impacts to existing facilities at the intersection. So the leading pedestrian interval can be quickly converted if the existing signal controller is capable of handling the changes. Based on the current field observations, the angling crosswalk will lengthen the pedestrian crossing and will locate them further out into the intersection. So staff is not currently recommending the changes to the crosswalks at this time, and will need to continue to evaluate the recommendation to determine the feasibility. So as Michael mentioned, staff concurs with both DKS and TSBC recommendations. We're here tonight to seek counsel, review, and direction regarding further work to implement the recommendations. The estimated cost for the design and construction for these improvements is approximately $450,000, and the schedule to complete the work is roughly 16 months. Currently, there are no fiscal impact associated with this report. Once we receive counsel's direction or recommendations, staff will issue a request proposal for design services and return to council to award a contract. This concludes our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Michael. Questions, comments from council?
So I'll start. Thank you. Have a comment.
I don't know. For you, of course. You can do now or wait for whichever you wish. Mr. Merz.
Ryan Merz, E. Keynes Avenue. I wish to support some of the design plans. The leading pedestrian would be great. I have lived in that area since 1971, and I have seen, before it was even built, and I have seen the dangers increase year after year as a pedestrian and as a motorist. I wish to support the turn bay at the north end, but I would really recommend that we not go for the flashing yellow light, that we have a completely protected two left-hand turn lanes. And the reason why is that just one accident costs the city $250,000 if we're sued as our insurance premium. We're very lucky that we haven't been sued by people at that intersection blaming the city for the mess that it is so far. I think we should do it correctly and get it done once and for all. Thank you.
Are there anybody else from the audience? Okay. So council comments, questions? Oh, Laura, I'm sorry. I was back to you.
That's okay. Thank you. So like residents that just spoke here, I do live in the area, and I have seen an increase in near misses. One of the elements that wasn't really discussed here tonight is that you're driving downhill at a high rate of speed on a lot of cars. So cars entering, going northbound from Cherry, crossing the intersection are kind of stuck. And sometimes what they do is they come out into the center of the intersection and wait for that left turn lane. So a lot of the added recommendations are good. You've got the right turn going in the south direction, so it takes that element away. You now know they're coming straight, so it takes that element away. But I just don't see drivers going north, not entering the intersection, and kind of sitting there in this no man's land. They're stuck, and cars coming down. I worry as they come through that they're going to actually stop. We've got to make improvements. I agree with that. I think that the three to four second delay for the pedestrians crossing is a great idea. I think that's an added benefit. I do like the modified median. I think that's an added benefit as well. I think that's an excellent suggestion, because as we know, we're going to see an increase in vehicles traveling south from Cherry. I tend to travel that area a lot, and I could be three cars back and still get stuck at the red light. So I'm at a red light, only a couple cars get through trying to make that left turn, and I'm the third car, and I can't make the signal. So there is definitely a need for improvements at that intersection. So I'd like to hear from the other council members, but I question, because probably over a year ago, I wrote a letter to Traffic and Safety. Why can't we just duplicate what we see at El Camino and Genovin? Why can't we have an intersection where we have protected left turns? You're crossing El Camino from Genovin to El Camino, and each direction has it protected. But I like this direction as well. So I guess I'm kind of torn on both. So I'd like to hear from Rest.
Mike. Yes, sure. So I just wanted to thank staff and the committee for doing some really, I mean, there's a lot of things going on here. And as somebody who walks and runs in the area, I think that there are some improvements needed, and I really like the pedestrian advanced warning there to get into the sidewalk, because the visibility is an issue, and the rate of speed is really high. So I'm generally in favor of everything that is being proposed here. One concern about the flashing yellows is that they are still a bit uncommon, and I'm wondering if people might be confused. When Caltrans put in the flashing reds on El Camino and Milbrae, a lot of people had no idea what to do. Stanley Roberts did a thing on Kron 4. People didn't know whether to stop or keep going or wait for it to stop flashing. So maybe we could do a little outreach in terms of just letting people know. A lot of people on Nextdoor were asking, what do we do with these lights? So maybe we get ahead of that by getting some information out there, and I would be supportive of trying out these yellows. If they're not adequate, then it's a quick change. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Oh, I like all the improvements. I also travel there a great deal, and whatever we do, we're going to have to make it very clear for people, because anything is going to be a big change for people who've traveled this 40 or 50 years. And I think one of the most difficult things about it is that on the south side, the lanes are one-way. You know, you have a dedicated left lane and then a right and straight, and then on the other side, it doesn't. So I think that's a lot of confusion, too. So whenever, whatever we decide, or if we go ahead with all of these improvements, let's make sure that we also include some signage ahead of those things, like a right only, a left only, whatever's going to be a change, because I think it's going to cause a lot of hesitation and jerkiness as we go forward. I was thinking about the Genovin-El Camino light change. The difficulty with that is, as you watch people, they don't coming, going west, they don't know that, or, you know, they're stopped, and then the people turning left onto El Camino are like, well, are they coming? Are they going? Because there's no arrow. So I think the arrow itself is the most important part. I'm not sure about the flashy yellows either. I kind of like just the green, but you guys are the experts, so if you think the yellow should do it, I don't like it. I want a green. Sorry. I vote for green.
San Francisco, too, right? San Francisco uses the turning yellow light.
I don't know. They're saying yes. Marty.
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide where the fully protected, how much more time that would So another five seconds on average, maybe six, five, for that much more additional safety. My priority is safety. I understand we could modify it as we move forward, but I want to move forward with the project. I think a five-second delay is probably worth somebody getting that extra little bit of time to get safely through the intersection, and the delay on the person is well worth it. People are going to adjust their behavior. The yellow is going to be funky, and that one funky time, boom, you know, is it worth it? So I definitely want to do the project. I'm leaning towards, no, I think it's five seconds. If you need to wait five seconds longer to make sure you can make that left-hand turn without any worry, I mean, it is protected, and I think that's a cleaner, more secure option. And people have to just know that, you know, leave home, leave five minutes earlier if you want to get through that intersection, because all of this doesn't include the additional traffic from YouTube's expansion, right? This is currently what we're dealing with, right?
That's correct.
So, yeah, I want to see protected turns. I think it's important enough.
Obviously, the TSBC, the Citizens Committee that we appoint, did not recommend this. Why was that? Or was it the yellow?
The TSBC recommended the flashing yellows.
Right, no, the protected.
Not protected.
Correct.
And the reason is because of the easy conversion at a later time if we want to do it. And it goes with what the California MUTCD recommends as well. They want agencies to try some other measures first before going directly to the last option.
With the flashing yellow, too, I'm having the, I think we all are. It's amazing this change.
Right. And there's operational effects, too, with the protected left turn, as you see here. see here with the time delay.
So that was, was that part of their concern as well?
I just would like to comment a little also.
Please.
So your thoughts are very accurate in terms of it's five seconds, right? That's what we're talking about. But that, I want to point out, that's an overall delay for the intersection. The what's, what we're really going to see is that there's an, it's going to be an improvement in delay for the left turns, probably. These left turn movements are going to actually have an easier time making it. But we're going to see more than a five-second increase in delay for just about everybody else, and that's how it's going to kind of average itself back out. So I just want to keep, make sure we understand that. We're not just talking about like five seconds more for the guys going straight through on San Bruno. Their actual increase for them is probably going to be more than five, seven. I, it's hard to say until, you know, I don't have that breakdown. But, and the other thing I want to comment is, this does not include the YouTube traffic. But what I would expect in terms of where that YouTube traffic is going to go is it's not going to show an increase, a whole lot of an increase in these two particular left turn movements. It's probably going to be an increase in left turns going eastbound on San Bruno into the business park and then right turns coming back out. So in a similar fashion, we make these two left turns better, yes. When the YouTube traffic comes in, these two left turns will have some benefit to that, but it's actually going to be those, that traffic's going to be part of the traffic that's experiencing the increased congestion level that will be because of the left turn, protected left turns. So just keep that in mind also as part of your thinking.
Irene, did you have, and then Marty?
Well, I had two questions. Well, if, if the yellow permissive is better, then certainly do that. But why 16 months? Why is it going to take us 16 months to do this? Or your estimate on it?
It's an estimate, you know? We have to get the intersection designed. The modification of the median has some design, but that needs to be done. There's a light pole there that needs to be relocated or some electrical design possibly that needs to be done, as well as possible some grading work, because the roadway is currently crowned to, you know, up to the median right now. So by cutting out a left turn lane, there may be some additional grading that needs to be done. So there's a lot, you know, there's a little bit more to it. I know it's conservative, 16 months, it'll just, it'll possibly be sooner than that.
Okay. I was just, seems like a long time.
Marty?
Right. So at what point do you need to make the final decision on flashing yellow and red as you're going through all the other things and you're getting to the design on it? That, would it be something that you could do a little more analysis on or it's not, it's just a little part of the work of changing a few bulbs at that point and doing some programming? But the pole, the poles themselves and the design, I'm just hoping that we can maybe get a little more clarity on, on those flashing yellows, because people are going to not really know what to do. And the worst thing it is, somebody's coming from behind and then somebody kind of stops and then bam, right? So I, I'm still going to stress the safety part of it. I mean, because, you know, yeah, they would like us to be the guinea pigs on their, their new design, and then, oh, that really didn't work out very well. There was two accidents in San Bruno within two weeks of implementing this new flashing yellow, because people kind of didn't know what to do. Anyhow, just thinking about when that critical decision to go from the protected to going to the flashing yellow, that's probably eight months from now or so. That, we have some time to kind of still be more familiar with it.
I would say that's probably true. We could delay that decision. We could start designing the rest of the improvements. The poles and everything that would be required are pretty much exactly the same. So, yeah, I think we could probably delay that decision till further down the road without having to delay anything else. I'd just like to comment, too, one more, as far as the little confusion over what the flashing yellow arrows and how they work. I understand that there was some confusion with what Caltrans did when they turned on the, those pedestrian beacons on El Camino. There's one, I think, significant difference with this situation where we would actually be able to put up a sign on our pole that tells you yield on the flashing yellow arrow. You know, that the way those pedestrian beacons were working, there wasn't a whole lot put up in terms of being able to tell people, we're sitting right there, what to do. We can actually, there is a sign that we would be able to put up on the pole that is similar to the ones that, you know, use for the, for a permissive with the green ball. It says yield on the green, you know, with the green circle thing. We could do pretty much the same kind of, a similar sign for the flashing yellow arrow. So it might help to alleviate some confusion from the drivers as to what to do when they see that.
Michael?
Thank you. So I just wanted to add that we did get an email from the TSBC Committee Chair, who couldn't be here, but wanted to share his thoughts on this. And one comment that he made in his, in his notes was that he was recommending that we go with the yellow, with the flashing yellow, because it would be easier to implement the protected turn later. However, if we implement the protected turn and then we experience backlogs and traffic there, it would be much harder to go back. In fact, he says it would be unadvisable to go back because of the habits that would already be, have been developed. So being that it's been completely vetted by staff, it's been vetted by our committee and by, by the experts, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that we go back and reanalyze this. I think we have a pretty solid recommendation. So I would recommend that we move forward with, with staff's recommendation.
Laura?
Commiss, Councilmember Salazar, thank you so much for that comment, because I was thinking back at the same thing, reading his, his email, and then going back to that, you know, this is a recommendation by a body of experts, not a council, that, you know, this is what they do. And I think you're, you're correct, and let's, let's move forward. I agree with moving forward with the yellow, flashing yellow, and then make changes if needed by staff recommendation. We can do an analysis, so.
Any other? So what I'm hearing, I've heard from two council members to go forward with the TSBC and staff recommendation. Also heard some other comments from my colleagues on the flashing light and then on the protected. So for the left turn, so what, Marty and, because again, this is us just providing direction to staff, so. Marty, Irene, anything? Were you, were you on this?
I, I said go forward, and then I changed my yellow, I mean, my red, my green, ah, my green to yellow, flashing yellow.
All right, so there's three that want to go forward, and that's fine, with the recommendations from the TSBC and the staff, which would be then the four suggested improvements to move forward. Is that, and then Marty? Or anything else? Mike?
I respect the TSBC's knowledge and base of information and, and I, and I hear, hear my colleagues up here, it just seems that, that amount of confusion for a few seconds of time is something that just wanted, it doesn't have to happen at this moment, and but I understand why, why everybody else thinks about that way. So I'm all right with proceeding forward.
Thank you. Staff have enough recommendation from council and understand direction?
So the next step that staff will take is to prepare an RFP for design services, and you will see this again at the point the project has been designed and is ready to be awarded for construction.
Okay, thank you.